All right, everybody, I'd like to welcome you. This is our regularly scheduled city council meeting for Tuesday, February 7th. It is 6 o'clock. We'll call the meeting to order. We'll start, if you would, with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you would please rise and join me.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Here.
Doug Glassbell?
Here.
J. David Reed?
Present.
Ed Yuliberry?
Here.
Hunter Barton?
Here.
All city councilors and our youth council representative are present.
Thank you. Are there any changes to the addition, or to the addition, the agenda?
There are no changes, additions, or deletions I'm aware of for the agenda tonight.
Thank you. First item is item number five, our youth city council applicant interview. And our applicant is Shiloh Warthon. And if you would, please come up to the podium. And tell us just quickly, a little bit about yourself.
Hi, I'm Shiloh Warthon. I'm 14 and I'm a graduate out of Montrose High School. I like playing volleyball, hanging out with my friends, and reading.
Very good. So tell us, what do you hope to get out of your experience on youth city council?
I'd like to hope, well, I hope that I can learn more about local government and how a community kind of works and functions as a whole. And I'd also like to help my community and give back in some way to make things better.
Excellent answer. Thank you. We appreciate you volunteering to be on the youth city council.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks, Shiloh.
All right, moving on to our next item is the Call for Public Comment. Call for Public Comment is, "An agenda item is a time when concerned members of a community may publicly voice their concerns and discuss items of interest. Please note that no formal action will be taken on the matters raised during this time. Is there any member of the public that would like to address council on a non-agenda item?" Seeing none, we can move on.
Can I ask, can I say something? This is a non-agenda item, right?
Non-agenda items.
Non-agenda items.
Okay. Yes, totally. Go here.
Well, let me finish reading all the other commentary then, while you come on up. Comments made during this time should be addressed to the council and pertain to matters of at least general importance to the council or to the city and its operations. Please be aware that neither city council nor city staff are expected to respond or engage in discussions or debate, personal attacks, or disagreements, personnel, and employment matters. The use of profanity, ethnic, racial, or gender-oriented slurs are prohibited, as is any disorderly conduct which violates state or local laws and shall not be permitted. We allocate three minutes per person for speaking. The timer is in the back of the room, and we will let you know when your time is about up. If you would, please state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, at a Renfro. 3241 Hollywood. Real estate agent. I'm just curious. I live out toward Black Canyon. It's a dark-skinned corridor. I love the Black Canyon. Just up there, snow shilling recently. Stars are amazing, we all know that. But I'm also a part of residential and commercial development. And part of commercial development, I'm wondering, is there any way with council to have dark sky be a part of development understanding? So, for example, I live next to new storage development. We were actually part of a sale of that, so it's interesting to be on the side of the sale. I look over and I see all these lights that are, I'm guessing, not dark sky friendly. And so I'm just kind of wondering, how do we, as a town, protect dark sky initiative, especially even the corridor that we're saying is a dark sky area? So, that's just my question, comment I'd like to present to you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments. No other comments? Then we'll move on to item number seven, our consent agenda. We'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Next item is our New Tavern Liquor License. City council consideration of an application for a new tavern liquor license at 35 North Cascade Avenue for Daisy McEckern, doing business as Red, White, and Brew Tavern for consumption on the licensed premise. And this is handled by City Attorney Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. This is an application for a tavern liquor license. This was the location formerly occupied by, I believe it was Twisted Ginger, and before that it was Sam's Tavern. File is in order for this, and the fees have been paid. The city clerk prepared written findings, which are in the city's official file, and you will find them in the packets. I'd encourage you to review those. Petitions concerning the desires of the neighborhood were circulated per Colorado law, and the originals are also in the official file. I can summarize those as follows. There were 81 signatures submitted. 42 were insufficient for being either outside the city limits or insufficient address, things of that nature. That left 39 signatures that were determined to be valid and in support of the license. There was one comment, finally, exclamation point was the comment, in support. Upon review of those petitions, it's my opinion they adequately reflect the desires of the neighborhood. With that, I would submit the city's official file into the record for the hearing. I would note a couple of things here. The applicant did attend alcohol server training, and I understand that she passed all of the exams that are given at the conclusion of that. There was a previous licensee I mentioned earlier, Twisted Ginger. They received a letter of non-renewal for their license due to unpaid taxes. I do not believe that that taints this application, but I wanted you just to be aware of it because there is a question in the materials about whether or not a previous application was denied in the last couple of years. It's not actually a denial, but I wanted to try and explain that, so you were aware of it. This application does include what I'd call kind of a sidewalk area, like for a cafe or something of that nature. That has not yet received an encroachment permit. Doesn't mean it won't, it's just in progress. I wanted you to be aware of its status. The state has approved the license at their level. Also, I thought that was significant to know. Mr. Mayor, with that, may I have your permission to call the applicant forward?
Please do.
This is Mickey Trin. If you would please go up to the lectern. Could you state your name and business address for us, please?
My name is Daisy McKietrin, and it's 35 North Cascade Avenue.
And could you tell them about your proposed business plan for this?
So, as you all know, there's neighboring bars and other places for people to go out and have fun. But it's pretty much either like a sports bar or just like a little hometown dive bar. And I'm just looking to bring something kind of country forward, so it's kind of something new and different for both the younger demographic and the older demographic that has known that bar's location for the past two decades.
Well, let's talk about the liquor code for a minute. This requires that the needs and desires of the neighborhood be considered when determining whether a new license should be issued. For our purposes, I recommend preliminary designation of the neighborhood as the area encompassed by our city limits. This is based on the size and layout of the community and our population distribution and so forth. Do you understand this determination of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Do you object to it for any reason?
No.
Do you believe that the needs and desires of the neighborhood are being met currently by our current establishments?
It's kind of a tricky question, but in my opinion, no. Because, as I was saying, four, it's pretty much aimed towards one crowd. It's not super inclusive. It's all kind of borderline, the same kind of stuff going on. And I'm just looking to bring something new.
I'd summarized the petitions earlier that were submitted. Can you tell the council how and by whom they were circulated?
So, we went around to the neighboring businesses, and we actually had quite a few people come up to the tavern while we were working there, and they want to come check everything out. And they were actually asking to sign the petition to bring it back to life.
So you had described it as bringing Sam's or Twisted Ginger back to life?
Just the current location, just because it's been a staple to everyone that I have personally talked to.
Sure. Okay. The city is, of course, serious about enforcing liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Are you familiar with those laws?
Yes, and all the bartenders that we have in line all have their competency training and certificates.
Excellent. Have you ever been accused of failing to operate in conformity with the liquor laws in the past?
Yes, sir.
At this point, I would ask the mayor if he wishes to inquire of the witness or any of the councilors.
Are there any questions from council?
Are you going to be serving any food there, or is...
We're going to do like pizzas and nachos and stuff. Nothing like a full meal.
For pizza?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, I have no further questions.
Very good. In that case, we will open a public hearing. And is there any member of the public that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve a new tavern liquor license at 35 North Cascade Avenue for Daisy McKietrin. Be a red, white, and brew tavern for consumption on the licensed premises.
I'll second that motion.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Next item is Ordinance 2611 on second reading. City council consideration of Ordinance 2611 on second reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose granting and authorizing the conveyance of an interest in city-owned real estate pursuant to Code 1-9-2 of the Official Code of the city of Montrose. This is handled by Planning Manager Jason.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, members of council. For some reason, I seem to always have technical difficulties here, so I'm connected, but my PowerPoint won't show up. That said, I don't have anything new to share from... I don't have anything new to share. I can bring up the PowerPoint. I can really give a synopsis of this presentation again to you all in the public if need be. But really, what we're looking at here is a transfer of property that was, that's currently with, currently city-owned as part of the golf course being transferred to the Renfros. Happy to answer any questions following this meeting. If everything is approved accordingly, we will just schedule a closing of the property owner and move forward with the recording of the deed and the transfer of the funds. So, happy to answer questions.
And we have seen this at work session and in a previous meeting, the first reading, so we've had a pretty good opportunity to really suss this out.
Actually, isn't this just kind of property that came our direction one time and now it's going back?
That's accurate, yeah. I think it was donated by the Renfros and other parties a while back, and it's just an unmaintained piece of property currently owned by the city that feels fitting to go back to the property owner so they can further maintain it, and it reduces our maintenance burden as well.
Any other questions from council?
I have a question. The maintenance of this is going to be by the new owner of the property?
It would be the new property owner, correct. It would be within their new parcel boundary as it's structured, and they would be the responsible party for maintenance.
And to reiterate, it becomes part of their parcel, not a second parcel.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, so I could show it.
No, that's okay. I just, I mean, I know the answer. I just think that's really important for the record, that we are, we know that, and applicant knows that.
Absolutely. So what they're doing, it really is a boundary line adjustment, so no new lots are being created with this application, just simply an addition of less than an acre of property to the Renfro parcel.
I guess, I was just curious, just to the funds that we received for the sale of the property, will they go to the golf course as part of their maintenance, being said it is partial to the golf course?
Great question. I think that the funds will go to the general fund, so I don't think that they're earmarked specifically for maintenance of the golf course, albeit the general fund does obviously take that into consideration.
We'll get to that in a minute.
Our golf course is not an enterprise fund, though, so we aren't required. I mean, it's part of our general fund.
Yep. It is a separate fund technically, but we subsidize it every year out of the general fund, so it's not self-sustaining.
It is not a standalone fund, or is it a standalone?
It's a separate account.
Separate account.
It's a separate account, but we subsidize it from the general fund.
I guess when I say standalone, I mean it doesn't, it isn't self-sustaining.
It's not an enterprise fund where it has to make its own way?
Yes.
And it can't receive general fund dollars?
Yep. We certainly don't transfer money from the golf course fund over to the general fund, which is usually the concern with enterprise funds, is that we would use, for example, money from a water and sewer fund to supplement other activities that are not water and sewer.
Very careful about that.
Yes, so, a separate account, and we often, every, we would love for it to be self-sustaining.
And if there are any needs from the golf course, there's never any problem with providing funding from the general fund for that?
We try to provide improvements at the golf course every year within reason that you all approve annually.
Any questions? In that case, we would accept public comment. If you would give your name and address for the record, please.
Renfro 2400, Colorado, Montrose, Colorado. I'm paying back this little piece of dirt that Tom Chaney and I donated for the golf course. My request is the money remaining with the golf course. Basically, the donation is made for the golf course, and I'm saying it should. One of the things that Tom and I do, we provide, we fill the lake, because you don't have enough water to fill that lake, so Tom will basically pay for all the irrigation water that goes through there. There's a ditch that we try to maintain, so I'd like to, in some way, maybe use some of the bike, put that bike out. Just a request, but I don't want to screw up the deal.
Thanks, Jim. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt Ordinance 2611 on second reading as presented. Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Cup of water, real quick. Get two while you're there.
Moving on to item number 10. Ordinance 2612 on first reading. City council consideration of Ordinance 2612 on first reading. An ordinance of the city of Montrose, Colorado, reviving Chapter 10-1 of the Official Code of the city of Montrose, Colorado, for the regulating of traffic adopted by reference, by the 2020, adopting by reference the 2020 edition of the Model Traffic Code for Colorado municipalities, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, superseding the 2003 Model Traffic Code for Colorado municipalities, providing other provisions consistent with the adoption of the 2020 code, and providing penalties for violation thereof. Staff attorney, or city attorney, Ben Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. City staff addressed the adoption of the Model Traffic Code during a recent work session. The ordinance in your packets, that's Ordinance 2612, is the result of a collaborative effort between the judge and the city manager's office, police command staff, and my office. We're currently using the 2003 edition of Model Traffic Code. Obviously, a lot of time has passed since that was written, and there's a desire to update to a newer version that will account for many of the changes in the law over the last 20 years or so. I believe the Model Traffic Code was designed, or is supposed to be, a turnkey code made available for adoption by reference into the codes of Colorado local governments. It's a simplified and abridged version of Title 42 from our state statutes. Unfortunately, it doesn't seem like it's ever been simple to adopt it. There have always been things that required us to either modify or delete them to make it fit within our municipal code. The ordinance in your packets addresses the issues that we found, and it adopts the 2020 Model Traffic Code into our code with the changes we thought were necessary to do so. I'll leave it to you to ask any questions, if you have some. I don't know, I think the judge is here, and he may have some comments of his own. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Any questions?
I think we reviewed this significantly in work session, and I'm comfortable with it.
Yeah, we've sussed out a lot of this, and especially the language and the referencing of Colorado revised statutes to make sure that we're in compliance with state law. I think we've done a lot of work on making sure we understand it completely. If there are no other questions, then we would hold a hearing. I will open the hearing. And is there anyone who would like to address council on this issue?
If I may. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As Ben indicated, this has been a joint effort in terms of modeling this ordinance, drafting this ordinance to make it as meaningful and clear as possible, and I would urge adoption of the ordinance. And I'd just make three quick points. First of all, as Ben indicated, it does bring us in line with current state law. We have been using the 2003 Model Traffic Code. There have been several additions in state law that are carried forward in the 2020 Model Traffic Code, and we will be allowed now to pursue those in the district court as well as in the state court. Secondly, I think this ordinance makes clear, and the prior ordinances do not, in terms of what is a traffic infraction and what is not a traffic infraction. The reason that's important is that a traffic infraction is civil in nature, so there's no right to a jury trial. If a person does not appear for a traffic infraction, we don't issue a warrant. The traffic infraction, if we notify the Department of Revenue, or the default is sent into the Department of Revenue, they assess points, and we assess the fine, and that's the end of the case. We don't have to issue warrants and try to pursue people who haven't appeared, which is not true for Class 1 and 2 misdemeanor traffic offenses. Thirdly, this ordinance specifically requires the court to adopt for traffic infractions only the state fine schedule. So we will be incorporated in the state fine schedule and using the same level of fines that the state's using. And as a matter of fact, we'd be drafting the fine schedule for the court by adopting the state law, opposed to listing each fine separately. Now, that is not true for Class 1 and 2 misdemeanor traffic offenses. Those are criminal in nature. There is a right to a jury trial. But also, we will, the reason for not including them is, we want people to have to come to court on those, so if there's a restitution issue, we can order restitution. So they won't be allowed to come to the window and pay a fine and be done with the case. They'll have to appear in court, and the court can impose appropriate penalties and restitution in those situations. So I think that this is a very important update. I think it's going to streamline things for the court, and I would urge the council to adopt. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to address them.
Any questions for the judge?
Thank you.
Thank you, Judge. Is there anyone else who would like to address council? Seeing none, I will close the hearing and would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mayor, I have moved past Ordinance 2612 on first reading as presented.
I'll second that.
There's going to be a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
J. David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
We have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to item 11, the CASA Preliminary Plan Development. City council consideration of the CASA Preliminary Plan Development, and this is Planner 2, Liam Reese.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, and members of the public. I have a free presentation to share. CASA has submitted a plan development application for their property located just north of the San Juan bypass. Let's start my presentation here. The project site is approximately 7.47 acres in size, and its zone is I-1 light industrial district. CASA is planning a supportive housing development on the property consisting of 45 separate residential buildings and a community center. However, they do not plan on subdividing the property, and all structures are planned to remain under one ownership. By code, if a proposed development requests multiple residential buildings all on one lot, this requires a plan development application, as it is a deviation from city standards. As mentioned, the proposal is for supportive housing, which is considered a conditional use in the I-1 zoning district, and that is included in the plan development application. I believe most plan development applications that you've seen have been associated with a subdivision. This is not. It's all remaining under a single ownership. However, the PD process is exactly the same as with a subdivision. An informal sketch plan was brought in front of the planning commission in December, where they were able to provide feedback to the applicant. The preliminary PD went to planning commission on January 25th, where they made a recommendation of approval to city council. According to our comprehensive plan land use chapter, this property is actually split between residential mixed density medium and employment center. The residential mixed density medium designation implies that the area is appropriate for a variety of housing types mixed within the neighborhood, ranging from single-family developments to triplexes or townhomes. The employment center designation is intended to encourage the development of light industrial office and business uses, but also complementary uses such as housing, hotels, childcare, et cetera. As mentioned, the property is owned I-1 light industrial. The intention of designation is to accommodate a limited group of research, manufacturing uses, and a transportation hub. Residential uses are also allowed and compatible with this zoning district. Supportive housing is a conditional use in this district, and planning commission approved the use of supportive housing on the property unanimously. Here is the preliminary plan development plan. As mentioned, this does include 45 residential buildings and a community center, as well as infrastructure, parking, et cetera. These are intended to accommodate the use. It is worth noting that the building footprints are shown on here, but these are intended to be approximate, and the final building footprints may vary somewhat, but this is what it's, what it's expected to look like. They are also working through the site development process with the project simultaneously. There is also a second page here. This is where a proposed utility usement is suggested to start the development, which is being dedicated for the PD plan. In conclusion, staff finds that the CASA preliminary plan development is in compliance with our PD regulations, as well as the underlying zoning and comprehensive plan. Planning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval. They did add a condition, which the applicant did agree to. Planning commission recommended the condition that the PD not allow the use of sheds, tents, or other temporary structures for housing or shelter, and that the property is not authorized to be used as a parking lot for cars, trailers, or recreational vehicles which are being used for housing or shelter, and the operator of the organization will actively work to prevent these outlined unauthorized uses on this property. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Could you give a short explanation of what supportive housing units are?
So, supportive housing is a... So supportive housing is a type of housing in which it's intended for people that might have some difficulty in finding housing otherwise, and there are services on site that will assist with certain issues that they might have. Is that a fair expression?
Yeah, I can read the kind of smart definition verbatim, but I think that covers it fairly well.
Okay. Just an idea of what it was and its intended uses.
I do have one question concerning, and I understand that this is conceptual, it isn't the final plat, but just making sure that I, my concern is that with that gas easement, that there isn't impingement by structures on that gas easement, and making sure that we keep that in our minds as we move forward, that the way it is currently drawn, there is a couple of buildings that are impending on that. And I understand, again, this is conceptual, this isn't the final plat, or any kind of further.
So some of those are proposed concrete slabs for, for example, a side block or a front porch that are not. As you stated, structures cannot be located on that.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're, the applicant is aware of that as well, so.
Is this the area where there used to be a trash pickup and delivery space?
It's just the west side.
Yes, I believe, adjacent to this property, yes.
It's next door where that property was. And just for a quick thing for the public record, could we explain what CASA is? I think we all understand, but I don't know if every member of the public understands what CASA stands for.
Can we ask the applicant maybe to come forward and talk about what the plan is? Because it's really interesting to hear a little more about it.
I would love to. I think, I want to make sure we have plenty of time for any other questions for staff first, and if not, then we would ask, well, our applicant, if they want to come forward and address counsel. If you could, Carlton, your name and address.
Yeah, Carlton Nakes, and I live at 4381 Government Springs Road. Good question, what is CASA? CASA, the national brand around that is Courtenway Special Advocates. As an organization, we are definitely diverse, and CASA has become a program area, and along with the youth services, which focuses on housing and supportive services for young adults, as well as, you know, the supervised visitation program. So it's kind of an organization that focuses on kids and families that have experienced abuse and neglect somewhere in the spectrum, you know, probably in childhood, and then the consequences of that through the rest of, you know, as they go to adulthood. This particular project, I'm sure you're aware, so I don't want to like reiterate too many things that have already been said, but it is to focus on the needs of our 18 to 24-year-olds that are either coming out of systems of care or homeless within our community, also working with Region 10. CASA will be owning the project, but we're also through MOUs trying to address the needs of our seniors in the community that are dealing with homelessness, behavioral health problems, those type of issues. And that'll be 30 units. 30 units are supportive housing, three units are bridge housing, which are temporary, short-term solutions for families or individuals in the community that find themselves at risk for homelessness, but have a long-term plan outside of this program. And then 12 units are at 80% AMI. We are striving to create a mixed community where we can kind of take advantage of the abilities of different populations.
How many units did you say were for kids aging out of foster care?
Actually, so 15 of these units are supportive housing for youth, similar to what we already have by Friendship Hall and another project that we have in Delta.
Any other questions, Carl?
Carlton, you have some facilities for the younger people out here with the fairgrounds, do you?
Yes, we sure do. And we have, the one thing that we're, I mean, the one thing we're proud to point out is we were the first in the state to actually focus supportive housing around the issue of young adults coming out of systems of care. And the other thing I think we should be proud to say is we learned about it, that It's an interesting demographic to work with. These are incredibly young people filled with potential that take a significant investment of our time, and they're well worth it.
Any other questions? Thank you, Carlton, appreciate your time. No other questions, but accept public comment. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel on this issue? Seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the CASA preliminary plan development.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laszlo?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And I just want to say off the side a little bit, we certainly appreciate the effort you guys put in, you know, supporting our youth and our homeless. It's an incredible journey, and we're glad to have you pioneering that way for a lot of the rest of people in the state.
Can I, if I can respond, let me just say it wouldn't happen without this community. The support we've received has been unbelievable, and the patience, and, you know, all the rest, we're very grateful to be able to do this here.
Thank you. Moving on, item number 12, the Klein Edition Annexation. City council will hold a hearing on the annexation of the Klein Edition, and this is handled by Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. As I usually say for these annexation hearings, items 12 and 13 on the agenda tonight are called for the Klein Edition, and there are three items for your consideration and vote. However, I will give one presentation for them, as they ultimately they're for the same project. The annexation schedule has not changed since we last presented this during the resolution to set a hearing date. As approved by resolution, tonight is the hearing date for the annexation of the zoning. The property in question is just about one acre in size and is located on the southwest corner of Prattport Road and 6600 Road. It is within the city's urban growth boundary, the city sewer service area and Tri County Water Service area. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the property's perimeter is contiguous to existing city limits. The applicant is the property owner, can apply, and intends to connect the property to the city sewer service. The applicant is requesting the zoning designation of MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. The city zoning just to the north is also designated as MHR, and all other properties are outside of city limits. The MHR district is intended to provide a suitable environment for single-family conventional and mobile homes, and is designed to allow a high density of single-family residences and related uses. Here is the annexation plat itself. The annexation follows existing property boundaries. The northernmost property line does border existing city limits and does meet the state continuity requirements. According to our comprehensive plan, this area is listed as residential mixed density low. This designation provides primarily for single-family homes, as well as small amounts of attached residential dwelling units. This is intended to preserve the traditional building pattern of existing residential development in Montrose. According to our growth area map, this property falls within growth area two, which indicates the property has some level of or moderate proximity to existing infrastructure. There is nearby sewer in both 6600 Road and Giraffos Road. And so in conclusion, staff finds that the proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, city and state annexation policy, and the comprehensive plan. An annexation agreement has been signed by the applicant. Due to the property's small size, an annexation impact report is not required. The area is urbanizing, and more than one-sixth of the property is contiguous to existing city limits. Planning commission made a unanimous recommendation of approval to request the MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 202302, Ordinance 2613, and Ordinance 2614. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for staff?
Yeah, how many units could you put on that one acre?
Uh...
The size of the lots, or...
Right, so if it was not subdivided, you could only have a single-family residence on there. In theory, you could subdivide it up to six lots, if, assuming it is ultimately MHR Manufactured Housing Residential District, it could be subdivided into six lots.
And if it was subdivided, that's a whole nother process that comes back through the city planning department and everything.
If it's more than, generally speaking, if it's more than three lots, it does have to be approved by planning commission and city council. If it's less than that, it still has to be approved by staff administrative board.
Any other questions? In that case, we will accept public comment on Resolution 202302. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution 2023-02 as presented.
Second.
Mr. Yuliberry got that one?
Yeah.
And there's a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laszlo?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to Ordinance 2613, first reading. City council consideration of Ordinance 2613 on first reading. An ordinance to the city of Montrose, Colorado, for the annexation of the Klein Edition. We have had a presentation, is there anything else you'd like to add?
I've nothing further to add, thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from counsel? In that case, I will hold a hearing, open the hearing. Is there any member of the public that would like to address counsel on this? And seeing none, I'll close the hearing.
I'll move that we pass Ordinance 2613 on first reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laszlo?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. And moving on to item 13, city council consideration of Ordinance 2614 on first reading. An ordinance to the city of Montrose, Colorado, providing for the zoning of the Klein Edition as MHR Manufactured Housing Retail District. Is there anything else you'd like to add, Wilmer?
It's residential district.
Manufactured Housing Residential District.
Yes.
You said retail.
You said retail, Mr. Mayor.
I am not surprised.
That wasn't water you got, is it?
That's just water, I don't know. Maybe it's stronger water. And are there any other questions?
I think it's been adequately covered.
Thank you. In that case, we will once again hold a hearing, open the hearing. Any member of the public like to address counsel on this? Seeing none, I'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt Ordinance 2614 on first reading as presented. I'll second that.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Laszlo?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yuliberry?
Yes.
Have a unanimous vote.
Thank you. Moving on to Ordinance 2615 on first reading. City council consideration of Ordinance 2615 on first reading. An ordinance to the city of Montrose, Colorado, designating the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company Building with a historic address of Seven South Townsend Avenue, Montrose, Colorado, as a city of Montrose historic property pursuant to item 4-15 of the official code of the city of Montrose. Planner Two, William Reese.
Thank you again. As you probably recall, the most recent historic designation hearing was for the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company Building located on South Rio Grande. As mentioned during that hearing, the company did move into that building for more space as they had to outgrow the previous building. I think it's fitting that the next designation for you is that older building that they moved out of. So that's why the building's title is the same, but this is a different building located at Seven South Townsend Avenue. The building is eligible for addition to our historic register due to its age, as well as eligibility criteria A and C. The building is significant for its association with the history of power generation in Montrose, having been erected in 1899 to house the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company, and its later association with the Valley Feed and Seed Company, a longstanding feed warehouse. The building, although greatly altered, does retain its original roof design and segmental arched openings on the north end of the west wall. The Montrose Electric Light Company was first organized in 1889 by P.A. Alonso Heber and Associates. The original location was in a planning mill that the Hebers owned, which housed a small steam boiler and engine use to provide direct current into town, only after the mill shut down for the night. In 1892, the plant was moved to the Montrose Flower Mill, where the power generation was still erratic and not available around the clock. E.S. Kessler from Denver took over the company in 1893 and began work to approve the service, and the company was reorganized as the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company on March 14th, 1898. In May of 1899, the company began construction of a 40-foot by 60-foot building to house their new power plant on the southeast corner of what at that time was Front Street and Third Street. Of course, that is now known as Townsend and Main. This is the first sandborne fire insurance map which shows the building, this is from 1899. The original plans called for space to accommodate two engines, but the second engine was planned for later installation. As you can see, denoted by the black rectangle, they originally installed a 125 horsepower four-lux engine. The company held a formal button pressing ceremony on July 27th, 1899 at 7:00 p.m. At that time, the company had the capacity to power 850 lights in Montrose. As shown on the 1904 map, there was a small extension that was added to the east. Also note the second rectangle showing that they installed the second engine, which was 75 horsepower. The red on this map indicates the building had a brick exterior. Of course, if you walk by the building today, you'll notice that this is covered with stucco. I don't know exactly when the stucco was added, but it is likely older than 50 years, so the stucco can be considered historic in its own right. One thing to note on here, which may be a bit difficult to see, but there is a circle next to the engines, which designates the presence of a chimney at the time, drawing that a few slides. With the need for expansion and increased capacity, the company purchased the property for a new warehouse a few recently completed as well. The existing building was sold to F.H. Posty in 1905, who converted the property into the Valley Feed and Seed Company. You can see that it's labeled as such in this 1908 map, it's on the bottom center here. Note that the chimney I had mentioned is no longer denoted on this map, indicating that it was removed. The maps are largely unchanged after that, this is from the 1919 fire insurance map, little change shown to the building. The Valley Feed and Seed Company remained in the building until the company was liquidated, and the property was sold in 1945 to John A. Hughes. It was sold again in 1986 to John R. Crouch Jr. and Margaret A. Crouch, then to the Montrose Music Store in 2012, and finally to resolve home buyers in 2022. It was pretty difficult to find some historic photographs of this property. This is really the only one that we have, thanks to Sally Johnson at the County Historical Society for assistance with this. As you can see, the building used to have that tall chimney right above the engines, obviously that's no longer there. Also note the two smaller chimneys, those would have been over the residential part of the building. Superintendent at the time, W.W. Torrance, would have slept in the building. The exact year of this picture is unknown, however, we do know that the lot just to the left here, as you can see, is vacant. That lot was developed in 1905, so this picture must have been taken prior to that. It's also hard to see on here, but you can see that the building is constructed of brick. Note that the roof shape has retained its original design, and also the openings on the north face and the left side of the front facade have retained their original shape. Here are some more recent photographs of the building. As mentioned, the original roof shape has been retained and remains a historical feature. Also, the opening on the left is original. Other than that, the rest of the facade has been pretty heavily altered. Other than that, the rest of the facade has been pretty heavily altered. On the south side of the building, obviously, that's been heavily altered as well. It does appear that there used to be an entrance on the left side of this wall, which has since been covered up, and some of the windows on this side have also been covered. And then I tried my best to get a picture of the north side. Unfortunately, it's very tight quarters there, so this is not the best, but if you peek through the gate at the narrow alley-like opening there, you can see that the brick facade there, this side was not covered with stucco. Also, these openings are original. You can somewhat see on here the arched brick lintels that are common on other brick buildings of the time period in Montrose. So in conclusion, staff finds that the Montrose Electric Light and Power Company building meets the city's eligibility and integrity criteria for inclusion on the city's register of historic buildings. Staff recommends approval for historic designation of this building. I'm happy to answer any questions.
What's the advantage of having a historical designation?
So there's two main things here. One, the property owner that your building is designated, assuming it's a commercial property, can be eligible for our facade grant improvement program. Buildings not have to be designated to be eligible for that. However, a designated building is eligible for additional funding on top of what would ordinarily be allotted to a building. So ordinarily, it's a one-to-one match. With designation, it's a $25,000 match. On top of that, the building can, depending on the project, can be eligible for state or national tax credits. Because we are a certified local government, anything that's designated on the city's register can be eligible for state tax credits. So that ultimately doesn't come from us, but is something that can be provided to the property owner from the state through designation upon our register.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I love these little slices into our history. I think that's really cool. And if you thought that alley was tight, I just can't even imagine what a guy like me would be.
Snug.
No, that's past snug. All right. No other questions, and we'll hold a hearing. We'll open the hearing. Is there any member of the public would like to address council on this? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing and entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2615 on the first reading as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulberry?
Yes.
Have you man this vote?
Thank you. Moving on to item number 15, the 6700 Road Extension Project Construction Contract. City council consideration of the approval of 4 million 595,856 dollars and 14 cents in expenditures for construction of the 6700 Road Extension Project. This includes the award of a construction contract to the Williams Construction in the amount of 4,387,256 and 14 cents, a survey and engineering support contract to Delmont Consultants in the amount of 133,600, flashing crosswalks and school zone signage expenditures of 25,000 and 50,000 in expenditures to the Delta Montrose Electric Association for a portion of costs associated with power line relocation and undergrounding alongside the project. City engineer Scott Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So no changes since we discussed at work session, but for the benefit of the public, I'll do a quick run-through of the project. So this dates back decades. The city's been looking to extend 6700 and fill in the missing link between Sunnyside and Miami. However, didn't own all of the rights away necessary to do so. It's remained in our comp plan, at least the last two revisions that I'm aware of, maybe earlier. We had a, finally got through with the owners, got the right-of-way secured and purchased last summer, so that allowed us to then move forward with this project, which has remained. It's been a higher priority, but because we've done the right-of-way, we just kind of sat idle. Another piece that's kind of prompted and prompted those most recent discussions, whereas we are continuing to see continued development in this area, so it's kind of rising to a point where it's starting to become an important piece that we need to get filled to kind of continue building out our transportation network. So with the right-of-way secured, we awarded a contract last year to Delmont Consultants for Montrose to do the design. They got through that last year and it was ready to bid in December. The product itself, we'll give a quick overview. It'll look a lot like the South Hill Crest Extension or the East Oak Grove Widening we did east of Walgreens. Through lanes in each direction, center turn lanes, bike lanes, and detached sidewalks. On those sidewalks, one side is eight foot, to kind of designate as a rec trail on the western side to match up with a lot of the rec trails along the remainder of 6700. And we're really excited for that portion. That kind of creates a pretty big missing link for our pedestrian connectivity as well. There is a couple residential subdivisions out here that this will now connect to the heart of our rec trail network as well. The product will, with the construction of the product, will redo the intersections of 6700 at Sunnyside and at Miami. With those, they will become, because 6700 have such a higher volume of traffic, it'll become the through street. The side streets will be stop-controlled. Probably, you know, 10 to 15 years out, as traffic pressures build on the side streets, the next logical stop for that would become a four-way stop once it hits warrants under the manual uniform traffic control devices, and then eventually those will become roundabouts. We're not doing roundabouts now. They're pretty spendy. You know, you can pretty easily spend about a million and a half on a roundabout, and it would be pretty underutilized because you don't have a lot of side blind traffic at this point. So we don't want to build something early just for it to sit there when we could use that money better elsewhere. The bidding itself, bids went out in December. We received four bids. The low bid was from Williams Construction, the 4.38 million, 4.39 million. They've done recent products for us. Recently, they did the southeast transmission main. As far as products of this type, they also did the South Hill Crest Extension. So well versed and a great contractor to work with, never had any problems. In addition to that, we do have a couple other expenditures that Dave mentioned. We are doing flashing crosswalks. At the, because of the volumes and speeds we're doing, and they're uncontrolled intersections at Miami and Sunnyside, the crosswalks will be a push-button activated crosswalk there, also driven by the proximity to the school. Brings it to a higher threshold as far as care for the design in those. The, also includes some school zone signs that we're buying directly, buying all those flashing signs directly because lumping it with another purchase for another project that the city's doing this summer for other crosswalks. We are also, with the product, there's some conflict with existing power poles, comp pedestals, things of that sort, so we're relocating those. We have the preliminary footprint for the roundabout design, so any relocations we're doing now, we're moving them outside of the ultimate footprint of that roundabout, so when that comes, we won't have to move those again. So some of those costs typically, DME, if it's, if they're going to relocate as a, keep it as an overhead line, they would do that at their expense through our franchise agreements. In some of these cases, because we're electing to go even further than we need to and we're going underground, we're cost sharing in that, so of that 150,000 expense, we're paying 50,000 to kind of pay our share of that. And then the other contractors is Delmont Consultants. Steve Stevenson is here from Delmont, thank you. So we like to keep continuity between the design and the surveying and stakeout, so we hire that work directly, so that contract is 133,600. That's, those are all set up on a as-needed basis, and it's pretty common that they come in under. We only pay for what we use and what we need. As far as traffic control and the schedule, so they're probably, I don't know if you've seen, they've started moving some equipment out there. They'll start this week. All goes well, contracts ready to go. We had our pre-con with them. They'll probably be closing the intersection of Miami and 6700 in a, probably within a month or so. Have it probably closed for a month. We'll set detours up around there. We have it set up. They actually do work within both intersections, but we're only allowing them to close one at a time, so you can imagine if we close both, that detour gets pretty large. And so they're going to do that one first, and that's in the name of getting a lot of the irrigation work done at the north end before the irrigation water comes on. And then their first cut schedule is looking like they won't close the Sunnyside and 6700 side until after school's out, to avoid impacts to the school, and then, you know, the Johnson pickup uses that route for routine as well. Budget for the project was 4.09 million. That included some general fund, water, capital, and sewer capital. So that does place us about 500,000 over budget. I will note, though, that we have about 300-some-thousand in contingency, or 400-some-thousand in contingency. We're also generally coming under on some of our larger tick items, asphalt and aggregates, which we pay for about a ton, so we only pay for what we use. So whether we would need to go into that overage or not, to be determined, gives me a good goal.
Better be safe, sorry.
Yeah, yep, yep. So we're asking for the authorization. Reality is, I just finished out, you know, the final payout on Woodgate today, we're 11% under, so, you know, it's pretty common that we come in 5% to 10% under. And, you know, that overage, the project did grow a little bit in footprint as we got into the intersections and got into more utility relocation work. But also, we're seeing our contractors are very tied up, and so when contractors get busy, prices go up, and we are seeing that across the board, you know, among other, you know, supply chain labor issues and things of that sort. But all manageable, and talking to finance generally, within the realm of our reserves available if we need to go into that larger pod. With that, happy to answer any questions.
One question I have is to make sure that we're going to make a good effort for outreach in the community before the closure of those intersections, because that's a, both of those intersections are pretty high traffic at this point.
Yep, yep. So what we plan, obviously, press releases, message board signs, and we want to, we don't want people to get down there and all of a sudden realize they can't get out when those intersections are closed. So we do have closures, you know, the next major arterial to remind people, so they don't turn off and get stuck, or worst case, like a semi comes down or something and you can't turn around. But in addition to that, at each, all of the major neighborhood intersections along the way, we'll put reminder signs, so people kind of get used to it, know not to turn right if they need to go left and around kind of thing, and to try, yeah, just make that as low impact as possible.
And how long will each of the intersections likely be closed?
So the north end will probably be closed for a month initially to get all the utility work done. The south end is a little larger. The scope of work probably about six weeks, get after school gets out. And then they'll close them again for probably about a week each when they prep and pave and do some concrete work in, later in the summer. That's all scheduled. That also has a milestone to be done before school starts back up. So both intersections complete and open to traffic before school starts in the fall as well.
What is our projected completion date?
So the milestone for the intersections is mid-August, again, before school starts. And the remainder of the project, mid to late October, depending on if anything's come up throughout. But we generally like to be done before it starts, you start worrying about cold weather on the paving, sacrificing its quality.
Any other questions for Mr. Murphy?
I just wanted to say that they've already been working on six, at the corner of 6700 and Sunnyside, putting some utilities underground already.
Oh, that was, yeah, I'm glad you brought that up. That was Charter. So they're running a fiber line out to, well, yeah, they're running a fiber line out to the New Woods Crossing, and then they hit a water line in doing that. That was completely independent of our work. It was private work. So some of the excavation you saw was fixing that water line as well. They hit one of Tri-Cammy's water lines out there.
Yeah, I was, I've got to say, I was, don't take this wrong, but I was kind of excited when I saw that it was not our water line.
Yeah, of course, it's on the coldest day of the year.
Not as excited as I was. All right. In that case, I would accept public comment if there's any member of the public that would like to address council on this issue. And seeing none, entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve 4 million 595,856 dollars and 14 cents in expenditures for construction of the 6700 Road Extension Project as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Ed Yulberry?
Yes.
Have you man this vote?
Well, personally, we covered that 14 cents.
Yeah, we'll pass the hat and come up with the extra. Item number 16, the Roush USA City Sewer Camera Van Purchase Recommendation. City council consideration of the purchase of a Roush USA CCTV sewer camera van from Ten Point Sales and Marketing LLC of Wheat Ridge, Colorado, for the total purchase price of 279,833 dollars. This is Utilities Manager Dave Reese.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, this, we talked about this yesterday at the work session, but for the general public, the city has a closed-circuit TV camera that we use for investigating sewer problems, doing condition assessment of the sewer lines in order to make sure that we use the proper rehabilitation methods and stuff when we do have to do rehabilitation and stuff. Our current TV van itself is a 2003 model, so it's over 20 years old. The camera system in it was replaced in 2016, so it's eight years old, seven years old. And again, with technology, computer systems and that, pretty old in technology years. So Tyler Good, our wastewater collection team leader, who's sitting here in the back, did a lot of the footwork on this project and this purchase. We're doing a number of demonstrations with TV camera operators or systems that are available for this type of purchase, demonstrations from them and secured quotes from them using the Sourcewell contract pricing for that. The one thing that really, well, a couple of things stood out with the Roush USA. One was their maintenance program and their ability to ship cameras and ship replacement parts to us in the event that we were having problems with ours, so that we can get back up and running while our equipment is in getting repaired. The second thing was that they actually have a cabin chassis available for building this van and shipping it to us within a matter of a few months. So you, right now, getting cabin chassis for these type of bills is very challenging, as you heard from Jim here yesterday with some of the pickup purchases and those type of things. And this cabin chassis is the same brand that we standardized on many years ago, and it meets all of our requirements. The budget included 245,000 dollars, 200,000 of which was paid in vehicle lease fees and being paid for out of vehicle replacement fund. We had a budgeted an additional 45,000 dollars in the sewer fund for upgrades and things that we, that were above what we had paid into the lease fee. We've looked at the funding for this for the nearly 280,000 dollars, and we've identified a couple of things that we can use, defer that, the cost from. One is reducing our large diameter TV inspection services by about 10,000 dollars. We had budgeted about 10,000 dollars for camera repairs. Buying a new camera, we'll have a new camera under warranty and won't be incurring those costs, as well as with the challenges of staffing last year, we were unable to complete as much TV inspection of our lines as we normally do and haven't identified as many lines that need rehabilitation and stuff. So we have a quarter million dollars in rehabilitation funds that we feel we can reduce that slightly in order to buy the camera, get us more technology, and help us be more proactive for future years in identifying those lines, rather than trying to make do or fit in lines that maybe we haven't completely done a good thorough assessment on.
The existing camera, are we still going to have it on, to use?
Until the new one comes in, yes, we will, we will have that, and then that will be sold. And that's the other thing that's not accounted for here, is what the resale value of that camera is and how that gets applied to the cost of the new camera.
Okay. Well, I would comment that I have had an opportunity to see that in operation with your staff, and it's really surprising how detailed view you can get of the sewer lines. I was a little surprised at the number of bugs sometimes. Really does a great job.
Yeah. Yeah.
One more thing, just for public, for the public concern, is this new TV camera won't do the smaller lines that a residential customer may have, but instead they, there's other.
Right, right. Yeah, this, this camera is, is designed for main sewer lines, we can get down to six-inch diameter, which is the smallest sewer mains that we have. It does have pan and tilt camera lens that we can find, where the surfaces connect, we can look up them short distances, and we can identify sometimes if there's root blockages in those connections or near that connection. But, once it gets beyond the visibility from within the sewer main, we have no ability to go up those service lines.
Any other questions or comments? In that case, would accept public comment, and seeing none, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of a Roush USA CCTV camera, sewer camera van, in ten-point sales and market from, from LLC for the total purchase price of two-seventy-nine, eight-thirty-three.
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on a motion? Roll call vote.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Vina?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Eddie Wilber?
Yes.
Have you man this vote?
Thank you. And moving on to item seventeen, the twenty-twenty-three trash truck purchase recommendations. City Council, consideration of the purchase of three trash trucks from Coy Brothers Equipment in Commerce City, Colorado, for the total purchase price of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Public Works Manager Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. So, yes, we have a recommendation for three new trash trucks from Coy's Brothers. Two of these three were recommended for purchase in twenty-twenty-two, and due to failure of the chassis vendor at that, on that year, it was eventually terminated, and those two purchases are rolled into this recommendation that you have before you. Two of the trucks are also replacements, so our trash trucks are one of our highest mechanical wear vehicles that we have. The amount of starts and stops they see on a daily basis is by far more than any other, and therefore their life expectancy of that vehicle is shorter. And so, these are on a seven-year replacement schedule, which after this purchase would put us at one truck every year, one, because we have seven of them. Third truck in this order is an additional truck, and that is, it was budgeted in twenty-twenty-two to help keep up with growth that we're noticing within our trash recycle division. We, we take out new cans for trash recycle every day. So, for both these reasons, we have been under pressure to get these, these trucks on order and get them here. We've been noticing this obviously since twenty-twenty-one, when these were originally ordered. So, we issued an RFP for three trash trucks this year with specifications for our trucks, and, and we were disappointed to find that none of the options that we received through those proposals met any of our, or met our specifications in general. So, we began reaching out to chassis and body manufacturers that do provide the equipment that we need and compiled a proposal from them, and we received that through a quote. So, we did eventually receive one quote for the, the trucks that will work for us, and that was from Coy's Brothers, for an auto car chassis and a high-end body. The auto car chassis would come from a dealer, TransWest in Grand Junction, which we have a great working relationship in other equipment, and we look forward to continue this, this work with them. And so, as detailed in the packet, the purchase is over the budgeted amount, and as we discussed at work session, this would be recouped over time through the fleet fund. This, this would have an impact, I think, to the long-term budgeting in the trash recycle fund, as this would be an increase for the new vehicles being purchased as replacements, and also for this overage that we're seeing at this time, so that is something to keep in mind for future trash recycle budgeting. But, other than that, nothing has changed since our work session discussions, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if they've come up.
Jim, what do you know, in this space, you'll be able to get those?
Shane here? Shane, you remember when these are available? It wasn't as long as we were afraid of. Do you remember the other time?
I think it was mid-next year.
Yeah, mid-next year, so, you know, almost a year and a half, which was, which is good, honestly. We, we ordered vectors in December, so vectors are similar size of equipment, I would say, and we ordered that in December of twenty-one. We are on schedule to receive those, April, May, maybe May of, of this year, so that's about a year and a half for a vehicle that size as well.
Yeah, I think that people tend to take for granted the fact that you get to go down and pick out a car, you drive that car home, and that is not the case in these specialized pieces of equipment that have a very specific purpose in the world, that they're all pretty much custom-built, and I think people need to remember that this isn't something you go and drive to the trash truck parking lot and pick one out and drive away.
I wish it was.
We wish it was too.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no other questions, would accept public comment, and if no member of the public wishes to address us, we would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of three trash trucks from Coy's Brothers Equipment, Commerce City, Colorado, for the total purchase price of one million, two-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and twenty-five cents. As reserve.
Second. Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote, please.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Vina?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Eddie Wilber?
Yes.
Have you man this vote?
Thank you. And on that same vein, moving on to item number eighteen, the twenty-twenty-two Ford Vehicle Purchase Amendment. City Council, consideration of a cost increase totaling one-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars and forty-eight cents for the twenty-twenty-two Ford Vehicle Purchase previously awarded to Siltar Motors. Jim Scheid.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. As you said, this is regarding our twenty-twenty-two Ford Vehicle Order, so not to be confused with the Ford Vehicle Order we discussed at work session this week. So, this is for the, the order placed last December, so the December of twenty-one, and it was for twenty vehicles from Siltar Motors. The, what's causing this to come up is that Ford Motor Company did not produce enough vehicles in twenty-twenty-two to fulfill all the orders that had been placed, and so the, the model year of the vehicle being manufactured changed to twenty-twenty-three, and that changed the price of the vehicles that we ordered. Now, we did confirm that the price change that we, the request we came, we received from Siltar does conform with the twenty-twenty-three state bid pricing, so we are still receiving government pricing for those vehicles, just based on a different model year than what was originally proposed. And it is still less than the original bid we received back in twenty-twenty-one from other vendors for the same equipment, so, so we feel like we are getting a, a fair deal in that part. I would say there is good news, and I think that's maybe the first time I've said good news about vehicle purchases in a while. These vehicles have been received by Siltar and are ready for delivery in this first quarter of this year, so with this amendment to their purchase amount, we should see these vehicles pretty soon.
Wow. Hard to be still.
I know.
Break out the bubbly.
The twenty-twenty-two cars are here.
Twenty-twenty-two, almost here.
How is that twenty-twenty-one?
Oh, my goodness. Well, we'll take every bit of good news we can get on car deliveries. All right, well, we would, any other, no other questions? Would accept public comment, and seeing none, entertain a motion.
I move that we approve a cost increase totaling one-hundred-and-forty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-thirty dollars, forty-eight cents for the twenty-twenty-two Ford Vehicle Purchase as presented.
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Roll call vote.
Dave Frank?
Yes.
Barbara Vina?
Yes.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Jay David Reed?
Yes.
Eddie Wilber?
Yes.
Have you man this vote?
Thank you. And then moves us on to staff reports. Do we have any staff that would have any reports or updates for council?
It's beginning late, they're all pretty quiet.
I know, it's like dinnertime, right? And seeing none, we'll go to our youth council representative, Hunter Barton, and look if he would give us an update on what's going on with youth council.
Uh, yes, so, we have, we are planning, sorry, we are planning a major event to be coming up here in March. This is sort of becoming an annual thing. Last year, it was called Rock the Rec. It was to raise awareness for alcohol usage or drug usage. This year, the theme will be mental health awareness with an emphasis on physical activity. We are planning to have a series of tournaments and different games and events held at the rec center with St. Patrick's Day theme. That's basically it.
So, are you enjoying your time on youth council?
Yes, yeah. Wasn't anything like I expected, but it's still fun.
Very good. With that, any city council comments?
I'd just like to thank the staff. I think they've had to really get out there and hustle in today's market to try to get the products that we need, so, thank you, guys.
And I want to give a kudo and a shout-out to our IT and technical staff, because we moved chambers from the city council chambers to the community room. We've had to deal with a lot of unexpected glitches and technical issues that they have really done a great job of keeping ahead of, and hats on the back for the entire group. And if they're...
I'd like to second that.
Yeah.
Not being a technical type of person with computers, he's been really generous to me with his time and his expertise.
It makes all things run smoother.
Jim, do you have a feel for when the new council chambers might be available?
Maybe.
It depends, they'll deliver a truck to do it?
Twenty-twenty, yeah, it, it is on schedule to be completed by the end of March, and so we're looking at probably that first part of April moving in, which also coincides with our moving dates with City Hall, so we are looking to be moving pretty much the entire month of March and some of April when it comes to City Hall, and then transitioning into the Elks Building as well.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take an opportunity to, to thank our police chief. I've been getting a lot of comments about the police department stopping a lot of people and reminding them that, that we have traffic laws, and also, there's been some comments about them monitoring the crosswalks, which I personally think that needs to be addressed even more, but they're doing the best they can based on their personnel, and I hope that pretty soon they'll get some more personnel and be fully staffed, and we can make Montrose a safer place.
Working on it all the time.
Thank you.
Very good. Well, if there's no other council comments, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wait, we, we make a motion to adjourn.
Tag team. We are adjourned.